Morning, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Ms. Beidelman, would you like to give the prayers this morning?
None of the other pastors have returned?
No.
The letters or calls we've made?
I figure you guys are beyond redemption.
Thank you so much, Lord, for an opportunity to come back to deal with county business. And we pray for our commissioners and for their staff. And we just believe you that, you know, we work together and all things come together when we do it as a team. So we just stand in agreement for that. And we believe you that we can have the best county around, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams, you have the dog.
Yeah, I'm gonna let Tim go through and actually do the presentation.
Oh, he's got it. Tom has it.
Is it on or?
It was.
Check to make sure.
Green light?
Is there a green light on the bottom? It was on. I think Tom turned it off.
There you go.
Thanks.
Today, we have about a one-year-old male shepherd mix, black and tan. He was found on East Broad in Abbey. It's ready for adoption today. We have thirty-one other dogs there that are more than welcome to come and look at. We had a good day yesterday. We adopted six dogs out and we did, adopted twelve last week, so we're heading in the right direction. Six yesterday was good, so I don't know if that's a record or not. Is to me, though.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Hey, Tim, while we have you here, I received a couple messages about dogs being put down. I know we put in the procedure before that we would do a notification to rescue groups and give them three days from when the notification went out, working days, before the dog would be put down. For some reason, I guess those emails have stopped. Where, if they got off the list, can we add them back on the list? And if they want to be added onto the list, could you provide your email so they can contact you?
Yes, yes, I can. I do send out an email, but there are so many out there. If they want to go on our list, they're more than welcome to email me at T-Pilblad. It's T-P-I-H-L-B-L-A-D at lorrainecounty.us and I'll put them on the list.
Okay.
Thank you.
Again, on that, if an email went out on Saturday, we're closed on Sunday and Monday, correct?
Right, so it'd be Thursday.
So it would be Thursday before the dog would be put down?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
One last thing, we're also sending out blasts before we euthanize dogs to make sure that even towards the end, when we're, before we euthanize them, we let the rescue groups know that the list is gonna be sent in for euthanasia. So we still do that, right?
Right, I send it out.
Okay. You're talking to the microphone?
Yes, I do.
Okay, now with that, too, if a dog is deemed unadoptable because of history or demeanor, that would be your decision, and email would not go out on that? Or would it go out?
Unadoptable dogs, I don't think so.
Commissioner, what we do is, if a dog is deemed medically unfit and it's too costly to put money into the animal, a decision can be made by the dog warden to euthanize the dog rather than try to overly invest in a dog that really doesn't have a lot of potential. It has happened.
Right, well, and that's being humane, too, you don't want a dog to suffer. My direction is more on with the temperament of the dog, if it's a biter or if it's aggressive.
What we do with biters, two things, known biters and pit bulls. By county policies, policy is not, are not adoptable and to be reintroduced into the community here in Lorraine County, but from outside the county, if somebody could come in and adopt those dogs, have to certify it. Tim, he has paperwork that they're taking the animal outside of this community and that they know it's a known biter. We don't reintroduce aggressive dogs back into our communities, there's been too many problems with that.
Okay. Tim, you're doing a great job. I just wanted to bring it up there.
I appreciate that.
Questions on it?
Sure.
I figured this is the forum to do it in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Things have really turned around out there.
Yes, they have, I'm very pleased. Thank you, Tim.
Madam Clerk?
At nine forty-five, we'll have a presentation from the state. I don't see them here right now, I mean, so we'll wait for a few on that. Under resolutions number one, investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Corporations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County commissioners.
Mr. Cordez.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelo. I do have a number of potential hires I wish to discuss with the board this morning, mainly at Gold and Acres. Also pending litigation and the potential sale, I will purchase of real estate. Those three topics allow under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, we go into an executive session, we talk about those three items that I might want. Thank you.
Approve and waive the meeting minutes of August twentieth?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Approve amendment number one, with Envision Pharmaceutical Services LLC for pharmacy benefit management services agreement effective retroactive to August first, two thousand fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cordez. Go ahead.
I was gonna ask him the same.
Commissioner, we, excuse me. If you recall, about three years ago, we had an issue with PBM and they were being bought, sold, merged, I don't quite remember.
Express Scripts or whoever.
I think it may have been Express Scripts.
Right.
At that time, we had some problems with them and we switched over to Envision mid-year to improve our positioning with regard to discounts and savings for the county self-insured healthcare plan. The, that plan right now probably runs, this year is gonna run about thirty-two million dollars in claims. We manage it in-house. All our other supplementary benefits that are attached to the medical all expire on a calendar year. I really don't want the prescription drug coming mid-year and upsetting that rotation. I do have, the RFPs completed, I do have an RFP from Envision, but I want to extend this contract, get it to India and realign it with the dental, the vision and the medical contracts so that we're working at the same time on all of those issues. So that's what this extension's for and then we will recontract with the successful bidders that we're working on now at the end of the year.
Thank you. That was my question, too. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under community development, approve and adjourn to housing, RLF administration agreement with state of Ohio, Ohio Development Services Agency for three years, retroactive to January first, two thousand thirteen.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under job and family, authorize various purchase of service agreements for Title twenty, social service block grant funded services for fiscal year fifteen, effective October first, two thousand fourteen, through September thirty, two thousand fifteen. Authorize director to execute an amend for changing in programming content and increase of value on behalf of the board with prosecutor's approval as to form. One, neighborhood alliance, Alaria and the mountain to exceed fifty thousand for emergency shelter services. And two, volunteer guardianship program of Lorraine County and the mountain to exceed nine thousand for adult guardianship services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under solid waste, approve three district market development grants for the Horizon Education Centers, Amherst Township and Alaria Township for playground mulch, park benches and playground equipment made from recycled materials in amount of twenty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and four cents.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes, we have three market development grants for you today that have met all the qualifications during the first round applications. They total twenty-three thousand, over twenty-three thousand dollars. We will be doing a second round, which is due in October first. And I have fifty-two thousand in the pot. So second rounds will be going out and we will be putting that out in the papers. And we'll be taking second round applications up to October one. So first round's done. I promised a second round if we didn't use all the money, so that's what we're gonna do.
Commissioner Williams, you talked to me or left me a note on a market grant, didn't you?
Well, it was for Alaria. They were asking when it was gonna come up for approval. Alaria Township, they're doing a great job with their park out there. And they were, for the second round application in October first, I told them to apply, they're getting some additional help where they might be able to pick up additional land and to be able to do more improvements to the park.
There's funding in this round for?
Is that outside of what we're doing right now?
This is Alaria Township.
We're doing Alaria Township.
We're doing one for Alaria Township today.
They are doing additional work and they wanted to apply for another grant in October and I told them by all means to apply.
They can apply in the second round, but they're being awarded one today for phase three of their playground.
Right, and in Amherst Township, there's a group of individuals who are working to improve the baseball and softball fields there. I know they're working on getting the material data sheet for the recyc, to prove that it is made out of recyclable material. They should be reapplying as well.
They can reapply, but they just need to have the proper paperwork, right?
Yeah.
That's proof of recycled content material and the materials being used, all right?
So there's another park program in Amherst Township outside the one we're awarding today?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, you got a couple of them going.
Volunteers are very active out in these two townships and they're doing a wonderful job. They're getting money from other areas to improve it and then they're using these grants to get some matching dollars to make a huge improvement. I know in Amherst Township, the softball and baseball fields, that is used by the entire community. It's just not the townships. Matter of fact, the majority of the people are coming from Lorraine and Alaria to use these fields.
We watch my nephew play there from Lorraine years ago. My kids, too, but they're from.
You have three projects you're approving today. The first one being the playground and at the Horizon Education Center here in Alaria, which is another rubber mulch project, all right? The second one being the Amherst Township benches for their park. And the third being Alaria Township's expansion three of their playground, which will complete their playground. All right?
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Don't leave, Keith, though. I want to talk about at least publicly what we talked about earlier this morning. I received a feed on my Twitter from the Commissioners Association. Apparently in Lake County, they've got a program to recycle styrofoam. By the reading, it was a short article I talked to Keith about this morning. They're using developmental disabilities, children for the work. And Keith said there might be a program out there Lorraine County could start in regards to recycled styrofoam. Go ahead, Keith.
There is a piece, yeah, there's a piece of equipment that's made by a company called Recycle Tech. They've been around a few years. They're actually at WasteCon this week. I know where they get a hold of the salesperson.
Deli Comic-Con recycling?
They take styrofoam and actually shrink the air out of it and make it into a big ball, all right? So, yeah, we could look into that equipment, all right?
I appreciate it, thank you.
There's just an article in the paper, someone locally is doing styrofoam right now, just recently.
I haven't seen much done with styrofoam. It's so bulky and so you gotta be able to get the air out of it now and get it shrunk down so you got it in a product you can resell. And you ever chase peanuts around?
Yes, I know.
All right.
Yeah, I understand.
All right.
The difficulty.
That's what you're up against, all right?
Madam Clerk?
Under the engineer, approve and adjourn LPA contract with KMJM Land Services LLC, Broadview Heights, in the amount of twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars for right-of-way acquisition services for Safe Routes to School Project in Sheffield Township. Authorize the engineer to execute on behalf of the board with prosecutor's approval as to form. This will be paid one hundred percent by Federal Highway Administration through ODOT.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Approve and adjourn LPA contract with OR Colen Associates, Fairview Park, in the amount of two thousand seven hundred for appraisal review services for Safe Routes to School Project in Sheffield Township. Authorize engineer to execute on behalf of the board with prosecutor's approval as to form. And this will be paid one hundred percent by Federal Highway Administration through ODOT.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Cordez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There's a couple quick things this morning. The first is that I'm pleased to inform you that after a year of being penalized, we have successfully received a new chip grant for the community. And it's quite large because we partnered with other entities and Don's here and it was the hard work of the Community Development Department to pull us out of the basement with regard to where we got put. And it really was through the effort of ourselves to try to support some of the efforts in Lorraine County with prevailing wage and so forth that caused us to get put on the penalty list. It could have been worse, we may not have gotten another, a grant this year. We may not have gotten back off of that, but we have very successfully. So Donna wants to explain this grant to you. I think it's important that the community here that what we're receiving going forward.
Thank you very much. Yesterday, we received word from the state that Lorraine County is the lead entity. Will be receiving the full funding that we had asked for, one million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars that will go towards improving housing through our territories. We partnered with the city of Oberlin and the city of Sheffield Lake. That partnering leveraged an additional one hundred and fifty thousand to the three of us collectively. Lorraine County will be playing the lead in this, up in community development, working with both the other two cities to identify eligible homeowners and then to bring them into our system, make sure they're qualified. At the end of the day, we'll have about nine hundred thousand dollars in housing repairs going on throughout the county within a two-year period. So we will be very busy. You will see a lot of resolutions coming down and a lot of improvements being made as we continue to improve our neighborhoods, not only through what gets a lot of the headlines, the demolitions that we've been doing that have been needed, but also then to maintain what we have and protect that stock that we have as well and keeping our neighborhoods functioning and people in their homes. We will also be partnering with LMHA on tenant-based rental assistance, which is a small portion, and then also continuing our fair housing program. So in a nutshell, that's what it is, but it was good news and it is the largest grant we've seen in chip and ever.
It's a real turnaround from the dissatisfaction that we, the relationship we had prior to. So I'm encouraged by that. We are going to be very tight on the guidelines. We're not gonna, we're not gonna allow outside influences to drift us in areas that we're gonna have a hard time and be challenged to get done. The, we're not, we're not gonna allow us to get into penalized situation again by the state. So I'm real happy with the work up there and I wanted to let you know about that early. Thanks.
Oh, there was one more thing I did want to add. I forgot, kind of one of the really cool things was Lorraine County scored a ninety-one point five out of a hundred points. That was the second highest application score in the state of Ohio. And typically where we get hurt is versus Appalachia and a couple of the other counties, our distress criteria are not that high. But, so we ended up, even though we're stronger than a lot of Appalachia, with the second-best scoring application in the state.
Good job, you were saying.
Thank you very much.
The second piece of, I don't know, it's good or bad news, moderate news, it's already been out there. Because the federal government releases their information pretty quick through their representatives. We've received roughly one point three five million dollars for the airport for a much-needed public apron rehab and improvement. I really shouldn't say rehab because we're taking the whole thing out and we're gonna do a complete replacement. Excuse me, the concrete out there is in terrible condition. It's been spoiling for a number of years. We no longer could make the repairs and stay within the guidelines. The problem was getting funding to fix it. Now, that's the good news. The bad news is we need to come up with about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to match it and we have some of that at the airport, but we discussed this when we made application. Excuse me, again this morning. If you recall, I told you we could not make application unless I assured the FAA that we were gonna make, or match on that grant. So we will be figuring that out, how to do that pretty soon and how much assistance the airport may need. We do have some money that we've been stockpiling over there, but it's not gonna be enough. And I explained this all back when we first applied for that. This is good news, it brings the money here, it makes much-needed improvements, but it's a struggle with the airport and the perception of the airport. If we don't do those improvements and we don't put this money in the infrastructure out there, somebody else will take this one point three five million dollars and do it at their airport. And that's not gonna make our situation out there any better. As you know, when you take FAA money, you're obligated from twenty years forward on that money. And it's like an addiction. It's very hard not to take that money because we don't have the local funds to be able to do these, this work and these repairs without that assistance. At a minimum, we get at least a hundred and fifty thousand, sometimes close to two hundred thousand a year for capital improvements on the runways and the pavements and the lighting systems from the FAA. It's very hard to make up that money if we're not, if we're not taking it. So once we start this work, it's twenty years forward from that, from that money. A lot of folks don't understand why we just don't close the gates and walk away out there. As you know, we tried to do that. We knew we weren't gonna be successful, but we were the mousete rod and we got squashed. So I'm glad that this is coming into Lorraine County, but obviously, obviously I still have some trepidation about the whole airport situation. Any questions on that at all?
Nope.
Okay, that's all I have for this morning, thanks.
Mr. Ennis?
I have two matters of pending litigation and one matter of imminent litigation that I would like to discuss with you in executive session.
Yes, order of states here.
Yes. John Corey, regional liaison, auditor of state office.
Either one. Thank you to the commissioners, thank you for having me here this morning, appreciate the time. Let me introduce myself. My name is John Corey, regional liaison for Ohio Auditor of State, Dave Yost. And the reason I'm here today is to present our Ohio Auditor of State Award with Distinction to the county auditor, J. Craig Snodgrass. So I'd like to, if you guys don't mind, I'd like to read a letter on behalf of state auditor, Dave Yost. Dear Mr. Snodgrass, congratulations. Based upon your recently completed financial audit, it gives me great pleasure to inform you that Lorraine County has received the Auditor of State, Auditor of State Award with Distinction. Clean and accurate record-keeping are the foundation for good government and the taxpayers can take pride in your commitment to accountability. The Auditor of State Award with Distinction is given to those entities that file an annual CAFR and timely financial reports in accordance with GAAP, as well as receive a clean audit report. The clean audit report means that your financial audit did not contain findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, single audit findings or any question costs. Congratulations again on receiving the Auditor of State Award with Distinction. My office looks forward to work, continuing work, to work with you to ensure clean, accountable and efficient government for all Ohioans. Sincerely, Dave Yost, Ohio Auditor of State. So I'd like to present this to you, Craig. Congratulations on behalf of auditor, Dave Yost. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Today, I'm very excited, very proud to receive this award. This award, we've been, we've set goals in our office and it's one of the things we had set out to do. Not everyone gets this award. We've been producing CAFRs for nearly twenty years, but there's, you know, a lot more criteria to actually receiving the Award with Distinction. And it is, it's a joint effort. I have individuals in my department I'd like to acknowledge as Barry Habney and Lily Brand, who are very instrumental in helping put this together. This is also a county award. Because every department has to spend all their bills, all their requisitions, everything through our office. And this is really about accountability and transparency. And that's why I'm also very proud to do this. We're working extremely hard with other departments. Obviously Treasurer Dan Tellerick, big part of this process, as well as the Commissioner's Office. Lisa Hobart, the Budget Director, we work very closely with her to make sure things are done. I think oftentimes we hear in government a lot of the disputes or disagreements between departments or officials, but this is one thing that we're all working together on. And I think this is a very good example of government working together. And I look forward to trying to go again, get it for year two next year. And I do appreciate all the support the board has given us as well and the tools that we need to produce such reports. Thank you.
Good job, Craig.
Thank you. And if anybody would like a copy of the CAFR, we do actually put it online.
It is online now, correct?
Trying to save costs against, we don't produce too many of these, but we do have a few hard copies, but we encourage either a disk or actually go online, you could take a look at it.
We normally have to send that in paper form to Moody's and Fitch's, though.
Yes, yes, that's why we do produce some of those.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner's report. Well, the fair was attended well. Saturday was the busy day and I did take my grandkids that day, so we had to stand in line for the rides and things like that. My granddaughter actually fell asleep on the way to the car eating her ice cream. I don't know how she, didn't drop it, but she was so cute. Anyways, this past week was our first goodwill board meeting at our new location on Keep Court. It's a great facility and it's already filled up with all their contract services and a lot of the supplies that they will be taking out to the stores. And don't forget about this Sunday, the Labor Day Festival at Black River Landing will be Sunday, the twenty-eighth, from twelve to eight. And we received a letter from our girl downstairs that was running our diner and because of some medical reasons, she will be closing. So hopefully we will put that out for bid again so we can have an opportunity for people to eat here in the building that don't want to bring their lunch. So other than that, I don't have anything else.
Yeah, it was a busy week, great turnout at the fair. Was fortunate enough, Ben Flugger and I bid together and got the reserve champion lamb this year. Again, two years in a row, we were able to get that. They had one young man that a bunch of companies got together, set an all-time record, twenty-seven dollars per pound for a lamb. It just went through the roof. The old record was thirteen years old. There was a new record set at this fair and twenty minutes later, it was blown out of the water. So just a wonderful job. Family went through some trying times recently and the people really stepped up to help with that. So congratulations to that young man. Also, Don's here. I was in our tent all day Thursday doing constituent issues, which has a lot of stormwater and road complaints. And I talked to Neil about one gentleman with collie road. I still haven't gotten with Bob Cliver yet or Ken, but issue on collie road. But we were filling out sign-ins, giving away two rain barrels this year from our stormwater district. Those from our county who were filling them out, they asked if they could still win. I said, sure, but yeah, we're gonna sell all your information. But Don, you've got a couple there on, Commissioner Kokoski, you wanna pull a couple of winners for us?
Sure. Oh, see, that's my trick. Lagrange Township, Judy Schmidt, congratulations. Oberlin. Oh, boy. C. Hooper. It doesn't have a first name, but there's an email and a phone number, so. C. Hooper, congratulations.
Congratulations, guys.
Did you say something about flooding?
Yeah, stormwater issue, I was talking a lot constituents, all over the county, whether it's Lorraine, Alaria, the townships, everybody was discussing the stormwater issues and the flooding. Most of it was in regards to what happened in May, but how we need to fix those problems. There was a lot of discussions there.
Okay, I mean, they're welcome to come to the SWAC meeting, they have township representatives and
I explained that to them.
Stormwater representatives.[1758.14]
They have projects and such, and I was talking about sewer issues with Columbia Township also, former trustee Rundle and trustee Heidecker.
Yesterday I had Sandy send you all a copy of the letter that I sent to Loco with regard to some proposals with respect to Hawk Road. So that we've journalized that issue.
Yeah, thank you for that, I know you, you had a phone conversation with Mr. McConnell and you followed up with that letter.
Well, you know, those are concepts that I've talked to the last two directors about, but they've never really been journalized officially. And it seems that there was, maybe not, the communication flow wasn't the way I thought it was. Hopefully we'll be able to find some, some, some common ground on that, I, I really wanna work together with them in that area so that we can see development over on that end of Columbia Township next to, next to Eaton Township. Also, you had a flooding issue?
Yeah, and you were gonna talk to the Mr. Glass or the gentleman with the broken tile? We all received a letter with some photographs of some flooding over in Grapton Township.
Yeah, let me, let me just make it clear as we seg, as I segue into that. The, since you all three received it, the flooding over there can be corrected by the engineer. The letter indicated, well, the county wasn't gonna move forward repairs, it wasn't doing, the county's ready to make those repairs. There's a landowner that is wedged in between the river and where we need to make the drainage tile repairs. They have an old tile on their property that is completely failed, that was either installed millennium ago by the county with no easement, it might have been one of those, can we put a tile here? We've run into them before, or it could have been a developer's tile that was put on, you know, a long time ago too, that, that wasn't really set up with an easement. Since that tile has failed, all the water is backing up down, down the, the ditch down that way and there's no place really for it to go, so it, so it ponds. Now, the first thing would be, well, let's get in there and we can probably waterjet that tile even from the road of the, the owner won't let us on the property. Even without the easement, we, we should begin to waterjet in there, but the tile has failed too completely and collapsed too completely for us to be able to waterjet that out and it's just not possible. So it needs a complete replacement, right now the landowner will not give us the easement to make the replacement to replace that tile. I have, I spoke with Commissioner Kokoski and there's a couple of options that I'm gonna, I'm going to take a look at and try to deploy to incentivize the landowner to try to work with us towards getting that tile replaced. Maybe if we make the right assurances, they'll be cooperative, but up to date, they have not been. And if I can't get them in a friendly manner, then we may need to take a more aggressive approach because we have a lot of homes flooding. And the only way out of this is to get through that tile and replace that tile and get to the river.
And I asked, we asked Jerry if, you know, we are a utility in some respects, as far as our stormwater goes and do we have those same, you know, abilities to go on people's properties by.
We have certain, we have certain things that we can do, let's hope that we never have to.
Right.
To resort to that, that, that type of method, but.
But we can't sit back and let these people just continue to flood like that.
We have responsibility.
No, I, I have the pictures with me, they, they have swimming pools in some of the basements.
In their basements, yeah.
And, and I know you flooded and Tom flooded during, during the last.
And we flooded, we all flooded, we've all flooded.
I haven't, that's why you buy, that's why you buy a slab, that's why you buy a slab house in, in Lorraine County, okay? The, the, so you, you know the feeling when it happens to you, you know, you know the, the trouble and all the pain you have to go through to try to reconstruct and, and the things you lose that you can't replace. So I wanna make it clear, we wanna help these people, the engineer wants to help down in this area, is prepared to do so. I have not had conversation, discussion or correspondence with the property owners yet, I will do so next week because I'm, I'm going away for a few days tomorrow, but once I'm back, this is gonna be a priority on my desk. And let's hope we can find a cooperative way of moving forward.
Awesome, thank you.
End of my report.
Okay. Very busy week, as you said, out in a fair and about to, around the county. Wanna thank the small businesses that have contacted me, Don, gonna be setting up some appointments for you in the next couple of months. They want you to come out and talk about the different programs we have as you get ready to expand, so. And football season's getting ready, I'm excited about it, actually we're in Ohio State Care, they're playing. But more importantly, high school football starting up, a lot of it gonna take place this Friday night. Get out, support your local high school teams, cheer for them, a lot of great kids playing and as parents with kids in sports, build your character, everything else, but they need the local support, end of my report.
Board Correspondents.
Will the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the Board this morning? I'll make a motion on executive session as outlined by the County Administrator and County Prosecutor.
Second.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.